This is the meeting of the Mobile City Planning Commission for Thursday, Sept- September 17th, October 1st.
All right.
General procedures for this remote meeting are as follows. I will announce an application. The staff will give an overview, including any information regarding feedback from the applicant or other interested parties. I will begin opening the meeting for discussion by commission members. After discussion, I will call for a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote. After the vote, we will move to the next items. Commission members and staff, please remember to keep your microphone on mute unless you are speaking to the meeting attendees. A roll call, myself, this lady, Latham. Ms. Jennifer Denson. Mr. Cart Blackwell.
President.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
Here.
Mr. Alan Cameron. Mr. Taylor Atchison. Mr. Matt Anderson.
President.
Mr. Nick Omburger.
Here.
Ms. Bess Rich. Mr. Don Embry.
Here.
And Mr. Jester. Okay, we have a call. Next, first, we would look at our adoption, adoption of the agenda. You have it before you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Which, um, item?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Okay.
I'm going to move in second here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Moving on to item number one, our holdovers. Um, 450 Saint Emmanuel Street. Staff recommends that their request for a one-year extension be granted. Any comments from staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I have admitted Lee Rambo with Jade Engineers into the meeting. Um, he is available to answer any questions that the commission may have.
This is just a request for an extension of a subdivision application.
That's correct.
Are any questions, comments by commissioners? Hearing none, I'll move for a motion.
Move to approve extension.
Second.
Second.
I'm going to move in second here. Any discussion? Do I need to roll call?
No, sir, unless there's a question as to a tie vote.
Okay. All in favor for the extension?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extension granted. Item number two, 5,000 Range Line Crossing Drive subdivision. And PUD staff recommends that it be withdrawn.
Held over, I think.
Well, we had already recommended one holdover. I've just admitted the applicant into the meeting. Uh, Mr. Pfeiffer, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if you want to go ahead and call the application and the recommendation.
Um, application of the 5,000 Range Line Crossing Drive subdivision and PUD both are recommended for withdrawal by staff. Are there any comments from the, uh, submitter?
Is there anything agreeable to withdraw on the application?
Let me, is everybody, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So, I'm a, this is in regards to, um, the Huffman subdivision. Am I correct here?
Mr. Pfeiffer, it is the site.
Yes.
It is the site that I believe the Huffmans have interest in there at Range Line Crossing Drive and Halls Mill Road. However, we have still not received corrected ownership authorization and notification. So, the application is incomplete. We, staff had previously recommended a holdover. Staff can only recommend one holdover. And at this point, we're recommending that the applicant withdraw. The applicant can request another holdover. However, in order for this application to be considered for approval by the commission, the corrected property owner consents and notification must be submitted.
Okay.
Margaret, this is Doug. Um, Chris is one of the property owners in there, so he has an interest in this. Could he request a holdover as opposed to withdrawal? Or does it have to be, uh, Christopher Hoffman?
I would think as an owner, he would have that ability to request.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, go ahead.
To request the holdover.
He is the, uh, I guess developer now, for lack of a better term, and the property owner in there. And if, uh, he can represent to the commission that everybody is coming to consent and they're going to get that done, then I think he would be able to, um, request a holdover.
Okay, and, and that's.
And I apologize for any confusion. I was under the assumption, you know, as the, as the seller in this certain transaction, the Huffmans were, were kind of taking over, were handling the subdivision, which, which they have been. And I was just here for, for, uh, questions or concerns on any, anything going on out there or if needed. And so, I apologize if I'm taking off guard here. Um, I, I like to be prepared, but, you know, so if you tell me what you need from me and I can make it happen.
Okay.
But, um, so I apologize for that.
Chris, what, oh, this is Doug Anderson. Just call me tomorrow.
Hey Doug.
Call me Monday. I'm in deposition all day tomorrow. If you'll call me, I've had conversations with the Huffmans about this. Um, if you'll call me Monday morning and I can tell you exactly what we need and what Christopher needs to do.
Okay.
If, if that's okay with the commission members.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, it's either grant another holdover or, or deny the, deny the application or, um, so maybe you're saying that we're okay?
I would request another holdover, um, just based off of what I know. Um, and I have not spoken with the Huffman, but like I said, I anticipated that they were, um, running point on this meeting. And so, I was just here for support, but, um, yes, I would like to request a holdover if that's okay.
How long does it typically take to resolve this kind of, uh, this kind of situation?
Matt, I would say this, uh, based on the fact we're in the process of sending notices for the October 15th meeting, the earliest this could come back up because notices will have to be sent will be November 5th.
Well, I would, I would make a motion to hold it over to November 5th.
Second.
Property moved in second here to hold over until November 5th. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item's held over until November 5th meeting. Item number three, new subdivision applications, 1171 in Myra Street. Recommended tentative approval. Comments by staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We did not receive any correspondence and opposition, nor have, do we have anyone signed up to speak in opposition. Uh, we did, uh, believe, Bert, we did not receive anything from the applicant stating concerns with the staff recommendation.
That's correct. Uh, no comments were received from the applicant.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, I would call for a motion.
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Property moved in second here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Item number four, 3050 Old Shell Road. Recommended wall drop subdivision, recommended for tentative approval. Comments from staff?
Uh, same situation here. No comments and no one signed up in opposition or with concerns. And no concerns from the applicant regarding staff recommendations.
Any, any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Move to approve subject staff recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Property moved in second here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh, aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Item number five, 950 Texas Street, Texas Marine Subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval. Comments from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, no comments or concerns from the neighborhood. I have admitted Mr. Bird, the surveyor. He's in agreement with the recommendation and is available for questions.
Questions by commissioners?
Margaret, is this, is this the one, uh, that has the house, the upper stairs of the house that's, uh, over the, over the property line?
No, that was the previous one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, disregard them.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners?
Uh, just note, I don't think that Jerry Bird has audio.
Okay.
Margaret, you did say he was agreeable with all the recommendations.
Correct.
Okay.
Is there a motion there?
Move approved based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Second.
Property moved in second here. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. New sidewalk waiver applications. Item number six, Gulf Coast trucks. Uh, southeast corner Concepcion Street Road and New Bay Bridge Road. Staff recommends approval of the waiver. Any comments from staff?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I've admitted William Latta into the meeting, who is here representing the application and is available for comments. However, I do need to bring to the board's attention, you should have received comments from Major Joe Womack as well as Herbert Wagner in opposition to the sidewalk waiver request.
Any questions or comments from, uh, commissioners?
I have a question. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, my question, and I think my question is to the staff, and I just need just some reminder because I read this last night and I just couldn't figure it out. Uh, and I know I said on this committee, uh, when we were looking at, uh, Africa Town, and I know the Africa Town has a neighborhood plan. Is this, um, this plan for this development, is it located within the, uh, Africa Town neighborhood plan? Or is it outside? Do we know?
I am unable to answer that question right this minute. Bert, do you have the plan available?
I am opening it up right now. So, one moment.
Sure.
And, and Ms. Pappas, is there any way possible you can show us where the placement of the sidewalks would be if, uh, if this was not approved? If the waiver was not approved, where would the sidewalk, sidewalk go?
Okay.
Can you see the cursor?
Uh-huh, I'm looking at it.
Okay. All along New Bay Bridge. Circling down to Concepcion Street Road to this corner.
Okay.
I've just sent via the Zoom group chat, the Africa Town land use map. It does show that the border goes around this site along Bay Bridge Road and then down Concepcion Street Road. It also shows that this site is split between a light industrial and general industrial land use.
Okay, Bert, but is it located within the, I didn't hear you. It is located within the neighborhood plan for Africa Town?
It's in the far west edge of the boundary of the neighborhood plan.
Okay. And that would be where, Margaret? If it's the far west, it will be up near the New Bay Bridge Road?
Bert, can you save it to the folder in the S drive and I'll grab it real quick?
Okay.
Thanks. Oh, maybe I can do it, do this. Hold on, I'm, I'm trying something else.
Margaret, it looks like it's bounded by Concepcion Street and, uh, Bay Bridge Road or the, the northern boundary and the, and the western boundary.
Okay.
Can the commission see this?
Yeah. No, I hadn't, okay, I hadn't, we're looking for what you put in there.
Okay, yes, ma'am. The site, this, uh, this is the area of, of the Africa Town plan. And the site in question is right here.
Okay, I don't see, what's on the screen now is just the vicinity map. I don't see what you're referencing.
Okay, hold on.
Okay. Okay. Well, that's a pretty map. Okay, go ahead.
It's colorful. Okay, this is Africa, part of the plan.
In the purple?
Yes, ma'am. The lighter purple is the site in question.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, my next question would be, because I know with the sidewalk waiver, and I know, uh, in previous applications, you know, we have denied a lot of sidewalk waivers because a lot of, uh, you know, our county commissioners, not county, but our city commissioners really want to push, you know, healthy walking, walking in our neighborhoods. And I know with the, uh, with being at home, uh, and walking in different areas, some, some have sidewalks and some does not. Some of the sidewalks are perfect, some are not. So, I was just wondering if this area, and I know this area is pretty close to the Lewis Quarters, and I think the, um, uh, the lumber, the lumber company is up near that area as well. So, I was just wondering if any, with, with the future development of Africa Town, and you have the Lewis Quarters that's there, you know, what would be the plan for not having a, uh, sidewalk? And then if there's future plans with Africa Town and sidewalks replaced, will, uh, this development, uh, have to go in and install sidewalks at that time? Or will it remain wait?
Once the waiver is granted, it is granted to this property in this configuration. There was a previous waiver granted for only a portion of the property. Uh, I'm bringing back up, and I'm sorry, are y'all seeing the plan sheet again? Or are you still on the vicinity map?
We're seeing the plan sheet.
Okay. This area here, per the Africa Town plan, is still proposed for industrial. However, this area in here, the yellow area, is Lewis Quarters, and it is proposed to remain residential. So, that is what the Africa Town plan shows. Pardon me, I'm gonna go back over and grab the report or the vicinity again. Yes, in the past, staff and this commission have both recommended and upheld that recommendation, denial of sidewalk waivers in commercial and industrial parks. Uh, the one that immediately comes to mind is the one there off, near Cooleyman Road, off I-10 and Highway 90 area. Those industrial parks are developed with low-speed streets, uh, that are, if they have anything beyond two lanes, that, uh, one lane in each direction, they may have a turn lane. You're on a, uh, a multi-lane highway here and Concepcion Street Road here. Uh, trucks are traveling at a pretty high rate of speed. Uh, and those were some mitigating factors that staff looked at in the recommendation of approval of the sidewalk waiver at this site.
I have a question about, uh, all the master plan, Africa Town master plan. Is there, is there a way to connect, uh, let me go back to Matt, a way to connect this segment of Africa Town to the, to the main section on the other side of the interstate? Is there a way to connect a sidewalk under the interstate?
There, you know, uh, I believe, I believe Nick would probably tell you, anything could be engineered and done if there's an endless funding source. However, also in this area, and I believe all of the frontage along New Bay Bridge Road is all under the control of Aldott. So, it would require their approval as well.
Margaret, I'll weigh in here a second. Yeah, the piece of Concepcion Street, uh, not Concepcion, I'm sorry, Bay Bridge Road, that is west of I-65, you know, 165 is City of Mobiles.
Okay.
But then you're correct. Once you get to the, basically to the railroad track, you would have to get a permit from the railroad because you got railroad right away through there, and then you pick up with the interstate right away, which would require permits through Aldott, but via FHWA to get to the other side. Don't know if when you get to the other side, when Bay Bridge Road picks back up, whether or not there's sidewalks along any of that section of it or not. So, it, again, as you said, it, it's, 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 it's possible, but it's probably a pretty heavy, hefty lift to get across those two hurdles, primarily the railroad and, uh, and, and 165 right there.
Uh, let me just say that I'm looking at the, uh, 2019 aerial photo and the Google Street View, and there is actually a sidewalk that begins at the railroad track by the I-165.
Got it.
It extends underneath I-165 to the east side of New Bay Bridge Road, and then it stops. And that occurs on both sides of the street going underneath I-110.
So, so there's, so Bert, you're saying there's existing, the.
Sidewalk.
That tough piece, the railroad to 165, that all has existing sidewalks on it?
Uh, uh, east of the railroad, yes.
Okay, good.
In the past, we've always denied these applications for, unless there is some kind of major terrain, topographical issue with construction. So, I'm more inclined to deny the waiver.
Yeah, and I, and I was typically, uh, you know, I've advocated in the past for, uh, supporting these waivers whenever there's not any adjacent, uh, sidewalks, but Bert just, I think Bert just said there's, there are sidewalks next to it, so I don't see any reason to, to wait this.
Even if there wasn't a plan to go under the interstate, which that's good to know that's there, obviously we didn't, you know, continue that, but if there was no way to connect these two sides of the interstate, if there was, I mean, just having the sidewalks connecting these two or three different pieces of property on this side of the interstate, I think would be an improvement. Since there is residential neighborhoods in that same area.
Right.
It, it's a pretty, I'm looking at the aerial photo now. It's a pretty substantial improvement that Aldott did, uh, in crossing the railroad tracks. I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's, it's all, it's all set on both sides to receive sidewalks, both east and west of, uh, the I-165 interchange there.
We're ready to entertain a motion?
I would suggest before our motions entertain, entertained, that the applicant be given an opportunity to address the commission.
Yeah, one thing I would like to bring up is just to the west of those railroad tracks, there's a major drainage and detention area that would have to be navigated, and it has a major topographical change there, I would say eight to 10 feet. Um, and then going along Concepcion, we're going into a major industrial area of which there are several sidewalk waivers that have already been granted. Further down Concepcion Street and even right across the street, sidewalk waivers have been granted. So, as far as connectivity, I don't know how much we're really looking at being able to achieve that. If Aldott has, uh, gotten across the railroad track, we're still looking at a pretty major ditch, uh, that's obstructing. So, just those two things, I, I think, I'd like y'all to take into consideration.
Those two areas you're speaking of are right there in the vicinity of, of the interstate?
Yeah, the, the northeast corner, right where you'd be going to the railroad tracks, there is a drainage and detention area, uh, right there that goes about out to, uh, New Bay Bridge Road. And so, that would be a, a difficult thing to navigate.
Does it obstruct the connectivity from the, uh, the sidewalk that Nick was referring to? It's already there?
I don't know. I haven't, I haven't looked at the pictures Nick's looked at, so.
And I'd have to believe there's adequate shoulder. That, that section of Bay Bridge is, is curbing guttered. So, there's going to be at least, at least five, if not 10 feet of probably reasonably flat land behind it. Uh, that may have to come in a little closer to the curbing gutter than what's customary.
Yeah. Even if we can, I mean, trying to have sidewalk in this area, since you've got commercial and industrial and residential all there together, I think it's a good idea. I've always advocated for not granting these waivers unless it's just some kind of topographical reason why you can't. But in this case, if, I don't see any reason why, why it can't be done.
Well, another thing.
And I would, I would also say that I've, I've actually walked, uh, didn't even know there's a sidewalk over there on that side, but on the, on the west side here where the, where the ditch is, I've actually walked exactly there in the last 12 months. And, uh, it would have been nice to have a sidewalk then, so yeah.
Yeah.
I can, there's definitely tons of room.
We can't see it from this drawing, but in looking at just the aerial underneath where it says west. where it says West Highland Avenue, there's actually a sidewalk there several hundred feet, along, you know, it's on the other, of course, it's on the other side of the site. But, uh, it looks like there's several hundred feet of sidewalk along an existing, existing parking lot where it says Highland, West Highland Avenue. There's a sidewalk all along there according to the aerial photo I'm looking at.
And, and even they, uh, uh, on Highland Avenue, there's a church there in the area. So, you know, i- if you're going to have some connectivity, I'm sure that, you know, with Highland Avenue as well as Conception Street, I just really think that it would be, uh, uh, an asset to that particular area for, to have a sidewalks.
If I may interject, that church is actually one of the ones that has the sidewalk waiver granted.
They've got a sidewalk.
They got, yeah, they got a sidewalk. That's, uh, Blooming Grove Baptist Church. So I know they have a sidewalk with, with the parking spots, that's where.
The, the only, the only
There are a lot of people that actually, actually walk to work, uh, walk to work along Conception Street Road or walk to go fishing.
The, the challenging, the challenge, the only challenging piece that I see, it might require the applicant, uh, you know, depending on how the commission acts, is the little stretch of Conception Street, the, the right of way is a little narrow. So it might be that, that sidewalk easement would have to be granted as part of, just to get them out of a tight right of way. Looking at the power poles, um, it looks like one of them in, kind of in the curve is fairly close. And not seeing a true survey, you know, that, that might be one place that gets a little tight. But, um, it looks like they've got plenty of, plenty of real estate to be able to accommodate it.
And it's all, mostly.
Yeah.
Ready for a motion?
Further discussion or questions from commissioners or the applicant? Hearing, uh, can I give a motion?
Who can deny the application for sidewalk waiver?
Okay.
I've been moved and seconded to deny the waiver request. Any further discussion? All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposing denial? Item passes, sidewalk waiver is denied. New planning unit development applications, item number seven, 3651 Government Boulevard. Item is recommended for approval. Any comments from staff?
Mr. Chairman, I just entered, uh, I believe it was Robert Piper into the meeting. Hold on, let me enter him via the phone. Mr. Piper, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, he's in the meeting. He is the only person signed up, uh, to address the commission. We did not receive any correspondence in opposition.
Hey, any, uh, from the applicant, is there anything you would like to add or about the application that's recommended for approval?
I, I have only very light and brief comments. I appreciate everyone's time. I'm the developer with an active interest in, in the application. I would just like to say for the last few months, we've worked with plane staff and our, our local civil engineering firm, Troy Williams, to, uh, develop the, a plan and an overall project that's, you know, entirely compliant with zoning ordinance requirements. We've, we've reviewed, um, uh, staff comments and, and the conditions for approval. And, and we agree and, and will adhere to, to all of those. So, um, I don't have any comments beyond that, besides I'm, I'm here for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing nine, um, do I have a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts, A through F.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Item passes. Item number eight, new planning approval applications, 1503 and 1529 Wolf Ridge Road. Items recommended for approval. Comments from staff?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've admitted David Schumer for the applicant into the meeting. He'll be available for questions. We did have one person that called in. They were unable to participate in the meeting. However, Ms. Alma Pringle is quote, "opposed completely and totally to the proposed project and doesn't think that it is right to place the use in a resident, residential area." And she's at 1464 Wolf Ridge Road.
Didn't we already do this?
Yes, um, however, there, it is a planning approval. Therefore, it is site plan specific, and they have modified the plan.
Guess they've still got the, the 200-foot buffer is still, I mean, that's, that exorbitant 200-foot slot that they agreed to retain, that nothing's really changed with that.
That is correct. The, the buffer's still in place. They have modified their circulation. And David, I believe they've eliminated a structure, haven't they?
Yeah, they, uh, the plan was changed where it was gonna have four individual structures that were mausoleum columbarium type structures with a gazebo in the middle. And during the development of their building phase, they've switched to, this is actually two structures under one roof with a breezeway between them. And they just wanted a more cemetery-like feel rather than the parking lot with the road. And if they were to ever expand, uh, of course, come back for planning approval, they would be able to just, you know, have the road wind around, you know, and for future expansion. Other than that, the use and the intent is the same.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I, I have, uh, one, I have a question. I was not involved in the previous approval. And a sidewalk was not part of the conditions. And it is proposed as one of the conditions on this application. I was not involved, I don't know if a sidewalk waiver had been approved or requested before. And I didn't realize, because this, it's, there is, the topograph, the topography on the side of the road to the south is not that bad. But north of the drive, the slope off of the road is relatively steep. And there's actually, there's a drainage feature to the north that's kind of in a, you can see the bubble up there that, uh, is a drawl. And there's a cross drain under the road that actually requires a guardrail. And I was wondering if those were part of a sidewalk waiver before I was not involved in the previous application.
There was no previous sidewalk waiver request. So a sidewalk would have, would be required unless a waiver is applied for and granted.
Okay, that was, that was my main question. Since it wasn't a condition before, I was, uh, not knowing the history and going back through all the documents, was wondering if the sidewalk waiver had been there. So I'll talk with the, the owner and, and I'll get some more detailed information to see if he wants to request a waiver. Beyond that, I'm in agreement with all the recommendations.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners?
Now, uh, Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna mention in the report, it did mention no public sidewalk is indicated along Wolf Ridge Road, front of the site. Therefore, the site plan should be revised to provide a city standard public sidewalk along Wolf Ridge Road. So it's noted in the report. It's, it's no waiver, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. I was just going to point out that you're correct. That is the recommendation, the site has not received a sidewalk waiver. If there are extenuating topographical or features or features associated with the property and right of way, the applicant could document those and then make an application to the commission. The commission could alter condition number five, revision of the site plan to provide a city standard public sidewalk along Wolf Ridge Road or the obtaining of an appropriate sidewalk waiver. It doesn't tie the commission's hand to approving that waiver. But that way, if the waiver is approved, there's no question as to whether or not this current application would have to come back before the board.
Uh, Margaret, are you suggesting just amend note number five?
Just for clarity, because we wouldn't want anyone to think you can't apply for a waiver. And then as well, if the waiver's approved, we wouldn't want the applicant coming back and amending this plan just for that one issue. Amending that condition number five, in theory, addresses potential confusion.
So Margaret, so what are you saying, we're taking number five out?
Now ma'am, what I'm saying is you keep number five as is, but add or to the end. Or the submission and approval of a sidewalk waiver.
And they will have to come back for the sidewalk waiver, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing nine, do I have a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations, uh, adopting findings of the facts, well, one through three, and modifying note number five to include or submission slash approval of a sidewalk waiver.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Application passes. New zoning applications, 158 Michigan Avenue was withdrawn by applicant. New subdivision applications, item number 10, 3624 Longview Lane, tough place subdivision. Staff recommends tentative approval. Any staff comments?
Yes, sir, I am admitting Jerry Bird again into the meeting as well as Clifford Wade, the applicant. While they're entering the meeting, I do want to bring the commission's attention to correspondence you received from the following individuals in support of this application. Robert and Laura Greer, Brad Van Antwerp, Caleb and Tricia Butts. And again, they are in support. Mr. Wade, can you hear us?
Yes.
Awesome, uh. Jerry, can you actually communicate now?
Oh, maybe I can.
Oh, goody.
All right.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, the two people that are signed up to speak are now in the meeting.
Thank you. Um, your application is before us, it's recommended for tentative approval. Do you have anything you wish to add?
Jerry Bird does not, I had sent in that, uh, we were in agreement with the recommendations.
Wow. Questions or comments from staff? Other than disbelief that Bird has no
There's a reason my video is off.
Your audio is dropped.
Margaret, is this, is this just creating a lot of legal records? Is that what it looks, that's what it looks like to me?
Uh, it's actually modifying the setback, uh, from 25 down to 20, which is allowed by the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
And also note that we did receive some letters of support for Mr. Wade's application.
Let's entertain a motion before Jerry changes his mind.
Is there a motion for this application?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes.
Thank you for your time.
Item number 11. Well, 11, yes. 34 South Reed and 1704 McGill Avenue, McGill Reed Subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval. Any comments from staff?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're on which application, number 12, 11?
11.
Okay, hold on, I have, I have people to admit. Okay, all right, Mr. Chairman, uh, okay, someone has on the live stream and they need to mute it. Thank you. Um, okay, uh.
Yes, ma'am, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, we have in the meeting for the application again, hopefully Jerry Bird, yes, um, for the application. And then we have calling in in opposition, I believe, all on one phone extension. Those Jordan, Kevin Quinn, George March, and James West. I also need to bring the commission's attention to correspondence that was sent to you in opposition. You should have, uh, copies of either email or, uh, the web portal comments from Kyler Chambers, George March, Amanda Turner, James West, Janine Woods, Jamie Two, Jahala Woods, Susie Pappas, and Kevin Quinn. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe everybody's in the meeting. And if you want to go ahead and call the application and then we can hear from the applicant and then the opposition.
Okay, currently you have applications standing up.
I'm getting there.
34 South Reed and 1704 McGill Avenue, recommended for tentative approval. The applicant can at this time, um, make any comments or make any notes that they wish to make?
Yes, this is Jerry Bird, time for me to speak.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, I know the opposition, I've seen the, the comments. And I think there's an awful lot of confusion about what we're trying to do. This is simply a readjustment of a lot line. This is simply a readjustment of a lot line. It has nothing to do with use of the property or how many units per, uh, address, South Reed. South Reed is right today is single family R-one zone on McGill. That is a four-unit apartment building. If this is approved and recorded finalized, it will be one single-family house on Reed Avenue. One four-unit apartment building on McGill. There will be no change in the use of the property. Uh, the applicant is merely trying to help a situation by providing parking, off-street parking for the four-plex on McGill. By taking the rear yard of South Reed and creating parking spaces. I'm not sure how many will get in there, four or five. But that's to get them off of the street. Now, this apartment building has been there for quite a number of years. There are active power meters and active gas meters for the building. His intention is to renovate the house on, um, Reed. And of course, it will still be R-one. But he says he's going to renovate it and put it on the market for sale, he said, at a premium price. The apartments is intending to renovate those. They will be required, any tenant will be required to have a twelve-month, uh, lease, a minimum of a twelve-month lease. Rent per unit will be one thousand to twelve hundred dollars per month. He feels like he will be improving the neighborhood. I mean, the building's sitting there, yes, in disrepair. He needs to go forward. He wants to do this. And he felt like providing the parking in the rear. And like I say, today, there's a R-one house, single-family house and a four-plex apartment. Tomorrow it could be a R-one and a four-plex apartment building. Um, that's about all I'd say now. We'll listen to the neighbors.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bird. I can take, uh, someone who wishes to speak against this application now.
I'll start off. My name is Buzz Jordan. Uh, I represent several of the homeowners, uh, involved in South Reed Avenue. James West at thirty South Reed, George March at twenty-seven South Reed, Kevin Quinn, who owns thirty-two South Reed and sixteen South Reed, myself, who owns fifteen South Reed and seventeen South Reed. And I believe, uh, Mr. Quinn submitted a petition with forty-three signatures in opposition to this project from residents of South Reed Avenue and residents of McGill Avenue. Um, we don't have any problem with him renovating, spending money to renovate that old house that's been, just sitting there. That's great. But what he's proposing to do is turn a backyard on South Reed into a parking lot. And I can't even imagine thirty or forty of us homeowners coming in. All of a sudden, we want to convert our backyards into parking lots, laying down concrete or asphalt. Especially Mr. Quinn, who has property adjacent to it. His backyard abuts the backyard of thirty-four South Reed, which is where they want to put in the parking lot. And it will diminish his property. South Reed is a historical and old historical single-family home neighborhood. Uh, and it's been growing, it's been coming back. People have been moving in there, renovating their houses. The houses have appreciated, the street's great, and it's doing wonderful. And now somebody wants to come in and take a, a beautiful piece of property, that two-story property, and basically take away a backyard. Well, they wouldn't even have a backyard then, which would increase the on-street parking for South Reed Avenue, uh, which is only, it has parking on one side only. Uh, the historic character of the neighborhood would be affected, the historic harmony of the neighborhood be, would be affected. We're in the old Dolphin Way Historic District, which would be impacted. So, uh, it would, it would just diminish the, the historic nature, character harmony. It would diminish property values. And, uh, it would also, we submit, create drainage issues for Mr. Quinn with his backyard adjacent to the apartment complex proposed backyard that they want to do, where drainage would then drain into his property, his backyard. And you know, when it rains down there, it's already problematic down there with, with the situation already. So if you put in a, a four, five, six-car parking lot, concrete or asphalt parking lot in that area would just increase that problem. So that's my position. Next speaking will be James West at thirty South Reed Avenue. Mr. West?
Yes, I have lived on the street for over twenty years. And, um, it, it's, it's a great street. It, it's really come through. It's, a lot of stuff's been changing over the last couple of years for the better. Uh, in the twenty years that I have lived in my home, the, the four-plex that you keep referring to at seventeen oh four, seven, yeah, seventeen oh four McGill Avenue has been a single-family dwelling. There's only been one family that has ever lived in that house in the twenty years that I've been there. Um, also on the tax assessor's website, it refers to that property as a duplex, not a four-plex. And I also feel that subdividing the lot at thirty-four South Reed will forever alter our street and lessen the chances that that historic home that's located at that address will ever be repaired to its original purpose as a single-family residence. I also question the legality of taking this land and subdividing it out.
Next will be George March of twenty-seven South Reed Avenue.
Hold on just a second. Uh, Doug, is there, is there? Is there something illegal about the subdivision?
Hello?
Hello? Hi Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just wanted to note that we can only take four speakers.
That's two. We've got two more.
Yeah, okay, so.
What was your comment?
So he said he questioned the legality of the subdivision. What, uh, what was, what's the problem? What, how, why would it be illegal?
Asking how it is legal. We're in a historic area and you guys are, it sounds like he's trying to, to cut this lot in half. I mean, his chances of selling a home with no backyard, I think, are not going to happen.
Doug, do you have anything to say about that? Is there, is there something legally questionable about subdivisions in historic districts?
Uh, no, let me go into more detail once we hear all of the opposition. But, um, there's nothing specific about historic districts.
Mr. Chairman, do we get two more speakers? We've had two so far.
You have two more.
Okay, number three is George March at twenty-seven South Reed Avenue.
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to just say that I'm in agreeance with what's been said before from Buzz Jordan and James West. And I just want to reiterate that the only way to, to keep this property as a single-family dwelling property is to not approve this. And that's the only way to guarantee that it will stay a single-family home and have the ability to be brought back to its historic quality and character.
And our fourth speaker is Kevin Quinn, owner of thirty-two South Reed, which is adjacent to thirty-four and of sixteen South Reed. He owns two properties on South Reed. Mr. Quinn?
Uh, uh, yeah, I, I want to reiterate the same thing. Mr. Jordan, Mr. March, Mr. West, uh, have said that this is a historical property. Beautiful historic property. If it's brought back to its original luster, I don't see what good a parking lot's going to do to anybody on South Reed Avenue, uh, especially myself, uh, being adjacent to it and potentially causing, causing flooding issues.
And that's our last speaker, our four speakers, as well as our petition that had forty-three signatures that Mr. Quinn submitted previously. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the owners or the owners rep does have another opportunity to respond to anything that we said, if they so choose.
Yes, Mr. Gant. Uh, Jerry Bird, yeah, the one speaker referred to diminished values. I don't believe there was any appraisals offered that would support that statement. Another speaker, or possibly the same one, spoke of increased runoff in the, uh, creation of the parking lot. Of course, any development of a parking lot in the rear, that plan would have to be submitted to city engineering. Detention would have to be provided. There would be no increased runoff any more so than what it runs off today. It would all be submitted to city engineering and approved prior to construction. Um, and I think, um, one of the letters, one of the people referred to this particular own, owner owning other property on McGill down to the west. This owner does not own any other properties in that block on McGill or on South Reed. Uh, this is his first venture into here, hoping to help the, help the neighborhood look better. I think that's it.
Thank you, sir. Doug, you had some comments you wanted to bring out.
Well, just to kind of answer Matt's question, uh, there's nothing in the subdivision regulations that, um, apply distinctly to a historic district. Um, this is, you know, just a mere subdivision, really is relocating, uh, the lot line between two, two lots and creating two legal lots of record. We have two tax parcel lots now. Um, and it's just a matter of your, your typical subdivision regulations, whether it's out in Off Hill Crest Road or in Midtown, same, same regulations.
And Doug, I, I remember several situations in the past where if a piece of property that's being subdivided meets the subdivision guidelines, then legally by state law, we really can't deny the subdivision of that property. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct, unless it has, uh, some safety hazard, uh, resulting from the subdivision. Uh, just in moving a, relocating an interior, interior lot line between two parcels here. I don't see anything, uh, that would come into play that would be, uh, support that type argument.
Doug, you said that the tax assessor's office already recognizes it as two separate individual parcels.
Uh, yeah, I just pulled up the city map and, and it is, um, it is two, two parcels. Uh, you know, the one on McGill, uh, is shown on, on the, in the staff report and the one on North, on, on South Reed. There, there are two lots. Um, so the end result will be two lots. It's just relocating the backyard from one house to the other house.
Okay.
Nick, could you talk about the runoff concern briefly?
Well, Mr. Bird was correct. Uh, you know, any, any type of parking lot, they would be required to, uh, uh, design a full-blown drainage system with retention. Uh, you know, we would, we would look at it. It's, it's possible in that area that they may have to go to a hundred-year design, two-year release, uh, because of the challenges with the remaining, uh, drainage system. So the drainage would, would not be diminished, but it could actually be, be, be improved. It might be that they were required to go to a more stringent design standard. Yeah, one question that I wanted to ask is where, where currently, where do people park for the property that fronts McGill? Uh, is there, I mean, I, if you go back to the, to the, the more zoomed-in drawing, uh, I mean, it almost looks like the structure occupies the entire piece of the, uh, real estate. Is there, anybody can address where, where the parking is now for that property?
Well, uh, Nick, as far as I know, it's on-street parking if they have a car. Um, possibly in today's world, bike riding or riding a bus, uh, has become a common thing. You walk up to, um, oh gosh, what Dolphin Street, Dolphin Road, wherever.
Yeah, Dolphin Street.
And, and can someone, uh, possibly address the, the four-plex versus two-plex versus whole family, I mean, how, how the property particularly is owned? Or what it actually is?
Okay, uh, Nick, the property, of course, is zoned R-one, single-family residential.
Correct.
Before the, before the commission right now is not a question of use. It is simply a matter of taking this lot line and shifting it to here, which, yes, will make this property more non-conforming. Uh, but it'll be, it'll exist just like the property to the south. Uh, and then it'll make this property here less non-conforming. Uh, the issue of use is not before the commission. We do not have a rezoning or variance or, to my knowledge, permits pending for approval. Uh, at this point, it's still zoned R-one. It will continue to be zoned R-one pending any applications. The structure here, uh, is non-conforming in terms of both its development on the site, setbacks, site coverage and so forth, and the possible number of units located within. Uh, so the issue of how many units are in there and if they are legal non-conforming will be, have to be addressed at a future date. But again, the subdivision at hand is strictly, will, will the commission approve the lot line moving from here to here?
Margaret, this is Doug. On building the parking lot, do they have to put cement, concrete, or can it remain grass? Or, um, is it, uh, half and half? And what, what's the building code if we know, uh, for that kind of requirement?
Well, it depends on whether or not legal non-conforming is established. Um, if it has to be brought up to current regulations for R-three, that would in fact be paved parking. But again, this is in a historic district. Uh, and typically in historic districts, some other type of surface is preferred.
Yeah, and that would help the drainage.
That's correct.
Margaret, a question, uh, you may have just answered this question, but listening to what you were saying, I lost part of it. But, uh, this is, how is this currently zoned?
R-one, single-family residential.
Okay, so if the applicant wants to have more than one dwelling unit there, he'll have to get a zoning change?
It could be. Really what's in question is, because right now we have, you know, one structure on each lot. The number of units in this structure here on McGill, um, is up to question. It could be legal non-conforming in that there were multiple units there prior to the adoption of our current zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-seven. But we do not have any documentation on it at this point. Uh, and because there are no permits pending for it, uh, we really can't answer that. What I can say is, in order to have more than one unit in this structure, legal non-conforming would have to be established or a rezoning or variances.
Yeah, it might be that, that it's, uh, it's been there a while. So, you know, it looks like there's three gas meters, three power meters. It looks like there's already three separate dwelling units in that structure.
Right.
And if they came in to get a permit of any type, they would have to send an affidavit to verify that it's legal non-conforming? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah.
I, I just don't see how we have any ground to deny the subdivision request. But I'm just trying to make sure that, I mean, if this were, we, we were looking at a zoning change or a HUD, it would be a different story. But I just don't see how we can deny the subdivision change.
Any other questions or comments by commissioners? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the subdivision, subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Item number twelve, one oh eight and one ten, First Street, First Street Partners subdivision. Staff recommends tentative approval. Comments from staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Bird's still in the meeting. However, it's my understanding he's in agreement with the recommendations. And we did not receive any correspondence uh, or communication in opposition.
Any questions or comments from staff? I mean, from commissioners? Hearing none. Do you have a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendation.
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Item number thirteen, one forty-six Highland Avenue Covenant Annex Subdivision. Staff recommends tentative approval. Staff comments?
Yes, sir. Um, I'm admitting William Lada uh, on this application.
Good evening, sir. Staff recommends tentative approval. Do you have any questions or comments?
No, we're, we're in agreement.
Any questions or comments by commissioners?
Margaret, when, this is Doug. When this was approved by the Board of Adjustment, I remember there being some discussion about a privacy fence. What was the final resolution of that? None, none required because it doesn't abut residential?
It was only required on the south end where it does abut the residential. On the two sides,
Okay.
churches, it, it's not required as what the conditions were.
Is that a condition of disapproval, Margaret?
I'm looking.
Does it need to be?
With it being, you know, with uh, to me, with the site, you know, all sites now being in the city limits since we've uh, rolled the jurisdiction back. To me, it's more important that the zoning dictate the buffer.
Okay.
Than the subdivision. But I'm looking through the recommendations and I don't see that.
Okay, that, that's a good point. It'd be a change of use which would create a commercial next to a residential. But the building to the east is also a church. Is that correct, William?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners or staff? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item passes. Item number fourteen, thirty-five twenty-one Irene Street and four twelve Avalon Street, Hell Kids subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval. Any comments from staff?
Uh, yes, sir. The applicant sent in an email just prior to the meeting and has re- requested a holdover until the October fifteenth meeting.
Holdover has been requested until the October
Fifteenth.
Meeting.
This was recommended for approval, right?
It was recommended for approval.
Correct.
With the request for the holdover being made, then I'll make the motion to grant the holdover till October fifteenth meeting.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes, held over till October fifteenth meeting. Item number fifteen, nineteen oh seven, West I sixty-five Service Row North, Brookdale Industrial Park subdivision. Recommended for tentative approval. Any comments from staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I have uh, Jerry Bird's in here for the application. But it's my understanding he's in agreement with the recommendations on both this and the next application. And we did not receive any correspondence in opposition.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Hearing none. I entertain a motion.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Item number sixteen, Range Line Hamilton Commercial Park subdivision. Uh, Dockside Drive, recommended for tentative approval. Uh, owner has no disagreements. Are there any comments from staff?
Uh, no, sir. Mr. Bird's available for questions if needed.
Any questions by commissioners? Hearing none. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Move to approve based on staff recommendations. Sorry, Ms. Shirley.
That's okay, second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Group applications. Item number seventeen, nine sixteen Church Street, Hank Reardon subdivision. Uh, Part A subdivision application recommended for tentative approval. Part B, PUD, uh, left up to the board to consider relevant facts. We'll take it. First of all, any comments from staff?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. I have admitted uh, Mr. Bird's here with the subdivision. Uh, Mr. Schumer's here on the PUD. Gentlemen, can you both hear us?
I can hear you.
Gary?
Oh, there.
Okay, and then in opposition, I have admitted Chuck Steg. And I apologize if I have mispronounced your name. Can you hear us? Mr. Steg? He's in the meeting. I'm not not a, I'm not able to control his audio. Um, but I will continue. Uh, Mr. Chairman, the commission should have received a lot of correspondence regarding most specifically the PUD. You should have a, an email from Stoney Boatman that is in support of the application. Then in opposition, you have correspondence from Bradley Turner, Ginger Copeland, Chuck Steg, David and Patty Tomley, David and Pamela Valeri, and Sherry and Dean Hartman.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Chuck Steg.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, so, Mr. Chairman, uh, we have Mr. Steg in opposition and then Mr. Schumer who's representing the PUD application. And then Mr. Bird who's here on the subdivision.
Okay, thank you. Um, subdivision's recommended for tentative approval. Um, the PUD is, is left up to consideration today. Does the owner have anything that they want to add to this?
Uh, this, this is David Schumer. I was just, I received some of the correspondence from the opposition. And I just wanted to address, they talked about parking along Church Street. We added the parallel spots on Church Street that are out of the existing travelway. So they would not affect any of the current traffic situation or parking on. And those parking spots are on Church and on Marine are not exclusive to this development. Any parking in the right of way is to be able to be used by any residents or any user. Uh, they were just for extra parking in, in case it was needed. We, we provide the required amount of parking on site. We actually have two extra parking spaces beyond what the city requires on site. Uh, the ten spaces outside on the roadway are just extra spaces. And the ones on Church are all out of the roadway. They don't affect the storm drain as they go around. That's why there's a gap in the three and three. There's, the storm drain is in the middle of those three. So we would not affect any of the runoff or stormwater on Church Street. Uh, and the other, most of the other comments were regarding, you know, the site being used as a dog park. And, you know, it has been because it's been vacant, but you can't, you know, compel an owner of a piece of property to have it remain vacant solely to be used for public sharing. I mean, it, it's, it's a piece of property that's, you know, legal to develop on. And so in, in a manner that meets the city's requirements. We're here for a HUD because of the multiple buildings. If this development, and Margaret may be able to correct me, if this development were able to have the same number of units without the separation, uh, we would not need a planning approval. It would fit under one building. And we're here for the, for the multiple buildings, which makes it less of a, you know, monolithic site with a parking lot on it. Uh, it's going to be an attractive site with landscaping. We didn't, you know, we tried to have another unit on before. Uh, and we just reduced it by unit to increase the green space and open space on the site. You know, the parking's going to be hidden on all sides by, you know, fences and gates. It's going to be gated. Uh, you know, it's going to be a nice, units that are going to be sold to individuals to become part of the community. And uh, if any of the commissioners have any other questions about the plan or any concerns, I'll be happy to address them. Margaret?
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any comments by those against? I can hear up to four, four people.
Yeah, I'd like to speak. I am, I'm Chuck Steg. I live at one fifty-five Marine Street. I lived there for fifteen years. Um, I've been in the real estate business for quite a long time. Um, I've worked out at the beach, but I actually live there on Marine. It's my permanent home. Um, I purchased my home with off-street parking, as did everybody else that lives in the generally affected area. All the way from Church Street, from uh, Broad to Charles, all those homes um, have off-street parking. Um, all the streets from government to Palmetto have off-street parking. It's because way back in the day, when they were planning this area, they, they built those homes with off-street parking for a reason. Um, now I know Taylor has proposed, uh, when he talked to the neighbors, he said there were going to be two and three bedroom townhomes on this property. And I know it calls for one point five parking spots per each one. Um, now, I don't know, most, most, most two and three bedroom homes that are going to be in that two hundred, three hundred thousand dollar range, um, they're going to require two household income. There's probably going to be two cars at least. So that spillover is already going to be parking in the street. Now, I kind of doubt that everybody's going to drive in and take their chances at finding one of the one point five. So immediately the on-street parking is going to go away first. Um, the only house in this area that does not have on-street parking is the one that Taylor Atchison just sold that is directly across from the land. Um, as mentioned before, um, it was originally sold as an amenity to the Marine Street Lofts where people could have a dog park. It wasn't uh, done until recently where the doggy bags and the, and the trash can to throw the poop away was left. Um, there's about twenty-five to thirty-five dogs that are in the Marine Street Lofts. Um, these other fourteen townhomes, let's assume that's another seven, not much green space. That means my front yard and the right of way has become the place where the dogs go. The bigger, the bigger issue though is parking. Um, I didn't, I didn't buy my house to sit and have four cars parked in front. We deal with it during Mardi Gras and we deal with it during neighborhood celebrations, but that's not three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And it's going to diminish my property value greatly. It's going to diminish my quality of life. The street sweepers will not be able to come by anymore. Um, the, the gutters are going to be clogged. Um, the, it's already flooding is bad enough in the area. I would suspect that I will have to have flood insurance now where I've never had to have it in the past because the street sweepers can't sweep the streets and keep the gutters clear. Um, the uh, two weeks during Mardi Gras, like I was saying, we, we deal with it, but I can tell you, it becomes a big issue. Marine Street turns into a one-way street. If you've ever been down it. And Marine Street is probably the second busiest north, west, north, south street in Oakley Garden District beside Broad. I mean, it's a major entry point into the neighborhood. And to have either, either one side or both sides of the streets blocked off presents problems for emergency vehicles. Um, I don't, I'm not anti-development at all. Taylor can, can do whatever he wants to with the land. But I have, I'm opposed to somebody that would build, that would have something approved for that land, increase his property value at the detriment of my property value. And I know all my neighbors in my general area stand with what I say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, uh, concern. Is there anybody else in line that wants to speak against this? Hearing none. Uh, the owner has an opportunity to speak, uh, respond?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the parking on the street is, is a significant problem, it won't block the street sweeper because the cars will be off of the travel way. Uh, Marine Street is wide enough to have parking and two-way traffic. It is a very wide street. So the parking on Marine Street is not going to stop the traffic going either direction. And on Church Street where the cars are going to be outside of the gutter line to where the street sweeper would still be able to go. But if the, if all of this on-street parking is the biggest hangup, I'm confident that the owner developer will be happy to not spend the money to generate those parking spots. We meet the city's requirement or exceed it by two spaces with the on-street, with the off-street parking. And we can just remove those six on Church and, and take away the four off of Marine Street. If that, if that's a sticking point.
That's not the sticking point. The problem is, is that the off-street parking, the people are going to be parking in front of our houses. Lord knows if they invite two friends over on a Saturday, half of them, right? Where are those two cars going to park? They're all going to be parked in front of our houses. And we have off-street parking. And the, the original city planners and the planning commission back in that time have had planned for those homes to have that. And you're completely wrong, David. If you say that, um, if you say that two, two, two lanes of traffic can go down Marine Street with one car parked on each side, or even one parked on one side of the street. I've lived there and I've been down there for Mardi Gras. And if anybody's been in that area, that's a complete lie.
It's just the cars parked on one side. Marine Street doesn't.
Marine Street's not wide enough for cars to park on one side or both sides and have two lanes of traffic go down. I can tell you.
Gentlemen, let's not, let's not argue. Let's not argue. Please, let's stay professional. Thank you.
We can get Mary Beth with uh, traffic to just uh, make some comments. Is she in the meeting?
Yeah, do you have a specific question you want me to answer?
I mean, about the, the width of Church Street, I can, I mean, I know in, in recent years, specific to Mardi Gras, we have been working with the neighbors and, uh, it had become such a parking lot where it was double parked that, have recently, I would say in the last three years, started implementing Mardi Gras no parking on one side of the street to coincide with the permanent no parking signs. Because it's a special exception during Mardi Gras. Only the yellow signs matter. So there, there is a, um, a noticeable issue with the width and the parking. And it's, a, a, as the gentleman has stated, the residents are familiar and aware. And, um, I, I mean, it's, it's an issue in, in a lot of places in Midtown. So it's not specifically uncommon to Church Street, but it, it is, it is an issue.
Can we get staff's comments on the, uh, I mean, we, we've got, looks like twenty-three parking spaces off that are not on the, uh, the roadway. And there's, uh, four, I mean, six and four, maybe ten spaces per parking. Uh, can we get staff's comments about the structure and the layout of the parking?
Adequate parking is provided on the site. They, they meet the requirements based on the number of units. David is correct. If this were all one building and fully compliant, parking, landscaping, et cetera, is proposed, was proposed, it would not be a P U D and it would strictly go straight to the permitting process. They have modified their plan. They have reduced, uh, the parking by, uh, you know, by, or excuse me, reduce the number of units by one. So they are down to fourteen with the twenty-one provided parking spaces. So in terms of the minimum standards in the zoning ordinance for the number of parking spaces per dwelling unit, it complies. And the driveway width has been widened to a twenty-four foot wide compliant driveway.
One way in, one way out?
No, sir. Twenty-four, uh, width allows two-way, two-way traffic.
Onto Marine Street. Okay, I see that now.
Yes, sir. Now, um, it, I'm just bringing it up, uh, because there is a, a known street parking issue. On-street parking is common in this area. What David was describing is proposed, and again, it's above and beyond the required number of spaces. While the spaces along, proposed along Marine Street are in the traveled roadway. You know, and that would still have to go through the city process for improvements in parking in the right of way. Same with what is proposed along Church Street. However, as David was trying to explain, and it may be better seen on this plan, those spaces, the six spaces are not proposed in the existing traveled roadway. Uh, the curb would be removed and then the inset made for those parallel parking spaces.
So those are not in the travel way?
Uh, as long as it's not a really wide vehicle.
Margaret, this is L B two, correct?
R B, I believe.
R B, okay. My, my colors aren't, I guess I'm getting colorblind. R B. Okay, so under R B, they could put one building of fourteen, fifteen, sixteen apartments. Is that correct?
Yes, fourteen.
Okay.
Now, to me, I just, I mean, Mr. Steg, his main objection was, uh, was parking, curbside parking. It looks to me like the one, the parking lot on Church Street is, should not be a problem because it's set back into the property line. Marine Street, that's a different story because it isn't somewhat in the travel way, but I don't. I mean, if he's meeting the parking requirements with, uh, without Marine Street, that, that would be a possibility to leave him Marine Street off to, to increase traffic flow through there, to not cause problems. But, um, that's just a suggestion.
It, it would seem to me that there's an acknowledgement that on-street parking is going to happen regardless.
Right.
It seems like this plan, at least it's, it's controlling it rather than it happening just uncontrolled. And, and with specifically Church Street, at least it is getting it off the street. I mean, I think by doing that, you're, 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 people typically, I, I wouldn't think that they would double park there. You know, somebody in those parking spots that are off-street and somebody on the street itself. So, so it seems to me that, that if there's an acknowledgement that it's going to happen, it's just they're trying to present a plan that, that controls it and makes it orderly as it can happen.
This also, this plan also hides the on-site parking from the neighbors as opposed to putting one building and having parking on two or three sides.
On the Marine Street side, is that just going to be lines painted for parking spots?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe last time we measured Marine Street, it was over thirty-six feet wide.
Okay. Well, there's no perfect solution down in that Midtown area, but for parking is always an issue, always will be, but this solid plan to me.
And, and this, the stuff on Marine Street's going to have to go through the, uh, through the, you know, traffic engineering and all that other stuff anyway. So, I mean, if it doesn't work, they'll just take it out and he'll just use the, the on-site parking.
Right. I'm set up with a plan.
Any other questions or comments by commissioners? We'll take the application to two parts. First part is the subdivision application. Uh, is there a motion?
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the subdivision?
Aye.
Any against? Subdivision passes. Part B, the P U D.
The staff have some findings of facts that, uh, could be referenced for the approval?
Yes, sir. And I believe Byrd is working diligently to try to send them to all meeting participants.
I just did it through the chat function. So if you check your chat function, you should be able to open it.
And I will pull them up. I'll pull them up on the screen like I did before. Sorry, y'all are going to have to give me a moment.
Are you just going to put them on the screen, Margaret?
Yes, instead of y'all listening to my horrible voice, read a page of narrative. Okay. Okay, can everyone see this?
Yes.
Unfortunately, it's two pages. But if you, uh, everyone wants to take a moment and read through. And then, Mr. Chairman, if you'll let me know, I'll pull up the next page.
These are just our standard selection of findings of facts, uh, that we're used to reading, so.
Yes.
Second page.
Okay. Sure it's going to get, oh, there we go.
That's the continuation of the conditions.
Yes, sir. Here, let me try and get a little more on there. There we go.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Aye.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation, adopting findings of facts, A, C, and F.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Thank you. Moving to our next item, item eighteen. Gardenia Gardens, R B Resort Subdivision. Part A, recommended tentative approval. And, um, planning approval also recommended tentative approval. Any comments or discuss, discussion by staff?
Hold on, let me try and, uh, get the applicant in here. Okay, I have just admitted Eric Jackson with Row Engineering and Surveying. He is available to answer any questions of the commission. The staff did not receive any correspondence in opposition or any concerns regarding these applications. But Mr. Jackson's available again for questions.
And this item's recommended tentative approval. Are there any questions or comments from staff?
I'm just, I'm agreeable to the conditions.
Oh, yeah, I'm here. I didn't hear that last part.
Are you agreeable to the conditions?
Yes.
And noted applicant is agreeable to conditions. Any questions, any other questions by commissioners?
Just, I, it must have has nothing to do with the application. Are these, uh, just overnight type RV rooms? Campground type development?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Is this overnight campground type rental development for RVs?
That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, just a, a comment for the applicant. I'd like to point out to him that downstream of here, on the other side of the interstate, there's been, there is, there has been a significant Alabama power effort, uh, with one of their projects crossing that roadway. So I would ask that, uh, the applicant work closely with the, uh, Mr. Davis on the design of the retention facilities and make sure he uses all available, uh, information for size of his retention pot appropriately.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments by commissioners or questions by commissioners? Hearing none. I'm taking it in two parts, part eight subdivision. Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Part B. Planning approval. Is there a motion?
Move to approve based on staff recommendations, findings of facts, A, B, C, and D.
Okay.
Second.
Properly moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. That concludes all our agenda items. Is there any other business?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, although I do want to thank the commission for coming to, attending these meetings and sticking with us through all our technological challenges, which probably rest with me. But again, thank you. Uh, staff really appreciates it.
What's the future hold as far as our meetings? Is City Council still doing live or Zoom?
City Council is still doing Zoom.
Oh, okay.
And most likely due to the latest extension, probably through November.
You've done a great job with it, Margaret.
Thank you. Byrd keeps me straight. But thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.
Chairman?